We did just call this meeting Tuesday night, a result of myself and Councilor Conway and other members of the City Council getting calls relative to some community meetings that have been held. We've had this, I'd like to welcome Eric Slagel. Also in the audience, we have former mayor, former City Councilor Bud Caulfield, and former Commissioner of Parks, Tom Belgrade. So with that, just by way of brief explanation, we have not received any calls about meetings. And I thought it was a good idea to just call a subcommittee meeting and get an update as to where we are. So when we do get calls, and even at the next City Council meeting, it'll be a good opportunity to explain to the rest of the Council, as well as our viewers, where we are at with applications, the process, and where we go from here, where we are at. So if you could, I don't think we have to go through the process again, but maybe just by a way of a brief explanation. It's not a typical process, if you will. The way the law has been written is that we are required by law to award five retail licenses. Cultivation is unlimited. And refresh my memory, has the Council voted to place a limit or maximum on the number of cultivation? I don't believe so.
The Council has not, has not done that.
Medical marijuana, again, there's no, yeah, there's no limit. Is that correct?
Medical, no, there is no limit. We don't anticipate there being very many medical, but there's no limit.
I think we ought to double-check that, because I thought we did vote not to have more than five, but I could be wrong.
No, we voted not to have more than five retail establishments.
Right.
But for cultivation, there is no limit. For cultivation, manufacturing, and processing.
Okay.
So no sales, just the...
Okay.
Okay, so with that, could you let us, Mr. Slagel, just update us on the status of how many applications we have received, those individuals, they submit applications, and then the requirement is to go out for a community meeting. And subsequent to that, is that when a host agreement is awarded? Or maybe you can just run through the steps for myself and members of the audience.
Sure. So very quickly, as you mentioned, the retail marijuana was passed by referendum. The referendum and the legislation required a certain number of establishments that the city could limit it to, based on the number of liquor licenses. In Lowell, that was five. The City Council did limit it to five. Patriot Care, which was the pre-existing medical marijuana provider, was granted a host community agreement to operate for retail. They started operating at the beginning of March of this year. And so they have been in operation for several months now, with thus far no problems from the city's perspective. The way the process has gone for the, oh, I apologize.
Could I just jump in? So can you tell me, I know the medical marijuana, is that by appointment, or is that by, how does, how do both retail versus medical marijuana operate? Is it up to the, is that included in the host community agreement?
Right. So if you're talking about whether they go by appointment or just line up, that is, typically that has been, it's in the host community agreement and the agreement between the municipalities and the providers. There were a few municipalities that did do the by appointment shopping.
Which ones were those?
Salem.
Salem. Which means they have to set up a time to...
They would set up a time online or over the phone before, and then they'd have a window when they would be able to show up and purchase their product, in an effort to deal with the parking issues.
And that's part of the agreement that the city signed, the host community agreement?
Well, that was the part of the agreement that Salem signed. Salem has since backed off of that. And most of the entities that were doing by appointment only have switched to not by appointment at this point. So the city's host community agreements do not require folks to do things by appointment. We took a different tack with respect to dealing with the parking issues that were potentially going to happen in Lowell. We required satellite lots that were manned by security and traffic mitigation with Lowell Police Details that the entity paid for, to deal with any traffic issues. And at Patriot Care, the stuff that the Lowell Police Department, the traffic engineer, Patriot Care, and the other city staff worked on, has worked, quite frankly, perfectly. There was never any traffic impact. We worked with the state police, we worked with a lot of different entities to make sure that the traffic mitigation went well. And from our perspective, it went as well as it could possibly go. And thus far, thus far, we've, so we've been instructing any other entity that they would be expected to meet the same standard that Patriot Care set, which is sufficient satellite lots, so that there's not going to be any traffic issues. They're going to have to have police details, they're going to have to coordinate with any kind of state police if they're near, you know, a road under their jurisdiction. And the traffic engineer and the Lowell Police are going to have to sign off on every, any traffic pattern, traffic plan, before they open. And that is in their host community agreement, that they have to have those sign-offs before they open.
Okay.
So to go through the application process, the entities began submitting applications actually before, in the spring of 2018, before it was even legal to sell marijuana. And we have been evaluating them for the last year and a half or so. We adopted the zoning in May, we...
May of 2018.
May of 2018. We, shortly thereafter, in May, we adopted the limit of five retail shops. So the way the process worked for the first batch of entities that submitted, was that they submitted their application, they had a meeting with staff, we, there was a marijuana working group that the manager established, that did a site visit to the proposed location. And then we requested that these entities have their community outreach meeting, that they're required under the state law to have, so that we could gauge kind of the community interest and see if there were concerns that were raised by the neighborhood that weren't readily apparent at the time.
So can I ask you, the first batch, what does that?
So there were...
Are we going to, this is a continuing thing until...
Well, until there's five.
Until there's five.
Right. So it may very well be that there is only one batch. The first batch had originally nine entities that got sufficiently through the process to be evaluated.
Councilor Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How many potential sites are there at this point?
So at this point in time, we're down to one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight potential sites at this point.
Can you, can you tell us where those eight, what parts, sections of the city those eight are in?
Absolutely. Well, so, and we provided a map to the subcommittee last year, but we can certainly go over it again. So there are, of the, so it's a little bit complicated, because one entity came in with a proposal that was at the bottom of Stedman Street, at Stedman and Westford. They proposed that location, and then that location, they took off the table and they moved to a different location. So they are no longer proposing the location at the end of Stedman and Westford.
Right. So now there's eight? Is that what it is? Not nine, but there's eight potential sites?
Right. There was one site that an entity wanted to propose, that was not, that they tried to bring the zoning change, was Be Well Organics on Phoenix Ave, and that one didn't go forward, so they never got evaluated, because they couldn't...
How many sites are there proposed for, let's go through the sections here, Centerville? How many are in Centerville?
One site, it was proposed in Centerville.
One's for Centerville.
Two sites were proposed in Belvedere.
Two in Belvedere.
And there's one site, two sites proposed in Drum Hill.
Let's take the Highlands for a second. How many sites are there proposed, potential sites, in the Highlands?
Well, the remainder of the sites, I think, are technically in the Highlands. There's one proposed at the old registry on Plain Street. That's, I think that's technically, we consider that the Highlands?
No, South Lowell.
Is that, South Lowell, I mean, that's a...
I know what you mean.
That's right on the border.
I'd say South Lowell, yeah.
There's two proposed in Drum Hill, and the remainder were on Middlesex Street.
So, I'm sorry, I'm a little confused with this. So in the Highlands, you got eight in total, so you got one in Centerville, two in Belvedere, and five in the Highlands?
Again...
Does the two in Belvedere include the one that was withdrawn? Or denied, the planning?
No, that does not count the one that...
So there were three, but there are now two?
Right. Well, yeah, again, the Be Well one, we never really counted, because they didn't have a legal site.
So was that part of the nine?
That was part of the nine, but not part of the eight. That's what docked it from nine to eight.
Let me get back to my question. So there's five sites for the Highlands, is that correct?
Well, again, it depends on whether you count the Plain Street site as the Highlands or not. I know some folks in the Highlands think that that's in the Highlands. So I prefer to talk about the locations that they are, rather than neighborhoods, because it gets on the border sometimes. So there were three proposed on Middlesex Street in the Highlands, there were two proposed on Drum Hill in the Highlands, there's one proposed on Plain Street.
How many up in Patacaville?
There's none proposed in Patacaville, and I, yeah, there's, no, there's none proposed in Patacaville, and I'm not sure exactly...
In any downtown?
Downtown, so it's not legal in downtown?
It's not zoned, all right.
It's not zoned in downtown, and I don't think that there's...
The school, with the school there and everything, or...
It's not because of the school, it's because that, we didn't, we didn't think that downtown could handle the parking. It was the reason why we didn't do it in downtown. And in Patacaville, I don't think there's any zones in Patacaville where it would be legal. So you couldn't do it in Patacaville. There's no zones that would be allowed.
So just for the, just for the information to the public here, how are they zoned? Does it go to the planning board, the zoning board? How does that work?
Sure. So we can talk a little bit about the process, which I think is what you're asking. So once the, the host, the community outreach meeting happens, and again, that's not a meeting that we put on, it's not a city meeting, it's a meeting that the company puts on that's required by the state regulations. And they have to notify butters as the state requires. So once that meeting happens, the next step in the process would be a host community agreement with the city. No retail manufacturers, except for Patriot Care, have a host community agreement with the city. We haven't signed any, the manager hasn't authorized any other host community agreements to be signed, for retail. If and when they are signed, they have to follow a two-pronged process. One is at the state, where they have to apply for their state license, and go through all the process, all the vetting with the state, to get their state license to sell retail marijuana. And the other process is the local process, where they have to go before the planning board, to get a special permit and site plan review. So the special permit process is a discretionary process with the planning board. That's completely separate than the manager's decision to give them a host community agreement. They still have to convince the planning board that they're an appropriate site, that they've got the appropriate traffic mitigation, that they're, you know, the site plan review has landscaping requirements and parking requirements. So they still have to meet the threshold of the planning board, in order to proceed to open their dispensary, the retail dispensary. But again, nobody's got to that process yet, because nobody else has a host community agreement, other than Patriot Care.
Is there a requirement that these community meetings are held prior to the host community agreement award?
That was something that we contemplated, and we actually asked that they did happen. There was no requirement that they happen, but we asked that they did happen, because we didn't want the first time that the neighborhood heard about something like this happening being after the city had already signed them up.
No, that's right, I understand.
It was, it's a tough question, and I think you and I have had that conversation in the past at one of the prior meetings, about, does it create some confusion? Possibly.
Yeah.
But the confusion is created by the neighbors getting knowledge that this might happen, and I think that's a good thing. Because they raised their concerns, and then that we know, and there's no decision made that that can go forward yet, but we have the neighborhood's concerns before that. The only other way that would happen would be, we would give them a host community agreement, and then they would go to the planning board, and then the neighbors would find out. And we've...
I don't believe in that process, quite frankly, for this, I understand the philosophy behind it, but if you get a host community agreement, you're going to the planning board, it's almost as if you've been given one stamp of approval to move forward. So I understand, and I don't think the community meetings have been, I know they've been posted, but I think outside of maybe the one in the Highlands, sometimes they just, I know this, I know the most recent one, only the immediate butters were notified, so...
And so I want to make something very clear about that one in particular. The most recent one that happened last week was from an entity that isn't on our list.
Oh, okay.
It is from an entity that we only had a very preliminary meeting with, and we told them, you are not in the first batch. If we don't give out five total host community agreements at the end of this batch, then we'll talk to you, and you can go forward, we'll evaluate you. But they're not one of the entities that we're evaluating.
Okay. Well, I think, knowing that, it's even more important that we clarify somehow that, I guess that they can submit applications, they can go through a community meeting, but if they're not even being considered, I think that's raising a red flag that, why even have it? Why get people alarmed about it, and they're not even being considered, so...
I'll be blunt, they were told that.
Okay.
We tell entities that doing anything other than giving us some information is, would be preliminary. It's not time for you to have a community outreach meeting, because you're not being considered at this time.
So does it make sense to stop receiving applications? I'm sorry, Councilor Conway, is that your point?
Yeah, absolutely. And this company that you've already talked with, and you said, no, you're not in the first, first group, and yet, they go ahead and they have the meeting. Wouldn't that, wouldn't that company automatically be eliminated, as far as I'm concerned?
Well, I can certainly talk to...
They're certainly not playing by the rules, and what they're doing is, they're going into a community, whether it's the Highlands, or the Acre, or wherever it may be, and they're, as the chairman just mentioned, rivaling up people that, there's no need to do that.
Sure.
Because they're not even, they're not even on the radar.
And here's the other problem with that one in particular. They did not notice properly. Because notice is supposed to come to the city manager's office and to the planning board, before these meetings happen. In which case, we tell the neighborhood groups that they're happening, we inform the City Council that they're happening, the manager has a representative that goes to each one of these meetings. So we have a process in place to deal with it, if it's properly noticed. Because this was not on our list of entities that we were dealing with, and we didn't get notice of it. We had no way, we didn't know it happened until after it happened, and so...
Is it fair to say that they will not be, that you will certainly not entertain that company going forward?
Well, certainly, again, so it's the manager's discretion, and I can't speak for the manager, but I would say, that's certainly not a good sign, when an entity does something like that, but...
Yeah, because right off the bat, they're not playing by the rules. And if they're not playing by the rules from the very beginning, you know, done right well, that if there was, if they opened up a spot, they're not going to play by the rules either.
Yes. I also want to make it really clear, that community outreach meeting is a state requirement. It is not our meeting, and so we can advise them not to do it, but they're following state regulations that aren't our, within our purview. That being said, I agree with Councilor Conway, it certainly has, certainly created confusion, that really created confusion, and it was exacerbated by the fact that they didn't do it properly. They shouldn't have done it in the first place, and then they did it improperly, so that nobody had noticed. If we had found out about it, we would have called them and said, you should not have this now, you're, you're not in consideration, and it's going to be very confusing for folks.
Well...
But we didn't have that opportunity, because they didn't provide us with notice.
And I know it's a policy call, per se, but does it not make sense to send a message until these other eight applicants that have had their meetings, that they're vetted, or that they're, they're vetted, or a host community agreement is awarded or not? I mean, it just seems that this will just kind of continue, until there are five in place, and they can just continue to apply. It just seems that, to me, until, I think we should put a, you know, a moratorium of fuel on the, on the receipt of applications.
Right. So, and so...
Or I guess they can apply, but...
Yeah, so, and that being said, I do want folks to understand, that we provide the information to folks who call and say that they're asking questions about retail, sales in Lowell, we let them know upfront. We have a bunch of applicants that are signed up, and there are only a certain number of licenses left, and we're only going forward if after this batch, there's licenses left. And that's not likely, but it's possible. And very, 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 very few entities have taken any further steps after getting that conversation over the phone. This was one of the entities that did go further, one of two, that have actually said, after hearing the information about how many we have, and how many licenses we have, have actually interested and gone forward. And it's very unfortunate that they decided to take the step. But I just want to assure you, that there's not a pool of these waiting to blow up, because there are other entities.
No, but I think as time goes on, and until these are awarded, and we can say, or when they do call and inquire, you know, are there any licenses available? And I don't know how long this is going to take, I think that would be helpful to know where we, and we'll get into that.
Sure.
I think I'd like to hear from the public first, but Councilor Conway, you have any other questions before we listen?
Yeah, I just, just on a personal point here, again, I think it's, I think it's kind of ridiculous to even be, sitting down and talking about this, and I certainly didn't vote for it. But what I'm upset about too, and we can't do anything about it, is that we're mandated by the state to have five of these sites, retail sites. But I think also, when we take a look at that, I think we have to use some common sense with it too. Whether we have to go back to the drawing board, or whatever it may be, you cannot have one neighborhood impacted with three, four, five, six sites, or whatever it is. It can't, it can't happen. It's not right. Because you wouldn't want to live in that particular neighborhood, and I wouldn't want to live in that neighborhood. So I think that, you know, this is something that I've talked to a number of people, and I think that what they're saying is, fair is fair. I mean, a lot of, it was voted on, yes, we have to have it. But again, we have to put some common sense on the table, on how we distribute these sites throughout the city. Because I'll tell you right now, it, as I said to you before, just a minute ago, you cannot impact, negatively impact, one neighborhood. And when you're talking about the Highlands, for example, listen, I know the history, I've been around a long time. The fact is, they get hit with the dump up there, there's a number of different things that they got hit with, and the last thing they need up in the Highlands is four of these sites, or three of, whatever it may be. That's, you know, I had to get that out on the table, because I'm not, I'm not very pleased about the whole situation. I'm not saying that you have direct control of it, but we just have to, we have to use some common sense going forward.
And so I want to make two points. The first is, I can irrefutably say that the manager shares your, your belief about that, that situation. And I also want to make clear, we don't control where these folks proposed sites. We are dealing with the sites that they're proposing.
No, I understand. We understand the Highlands, I understand Belvedere, because, and Industrial Ave, and the old registry, because it's, it's highway access.
Right. And they're looking for highway access, that's what they're doing.
Before we continue, I'd like to recognize that, we'd like to go to the members of the public and have their input, so. Former mayor, City Council, Councilor Caulfield, thank you for being patient, I just wanted to, I just want to get an understanding on how that latest community meeting took place, and then we just learned, they were told that they're not even going to be considered.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Edward Caulfield, 589 Princeton Boulevard, Nancy Judge, the Chair of the Highlands Neighborhood Association, Tom Belgrade, and I, we're going to a meeting at the BFW tonight at 6:00 to discuss another proposal. And Councilor Conway, that was an excellent, excellent question you asked. How many locations are in a city, and how many, one particular neighborhood has proposals? I personally don't have a problem with the Industrial Avenue site, Lowell Connector, Route 3, 495, and as far as I'm concerned, that's in the Highlands. Plain Street, that's as much in the Highlands as Sanders Avenue, or Stevens Street, or Westford Street. That's part of the Highlands. The proposal there at the old registry...
The Sacred Heart Neighborhood Group might tend to differ with you, but that's okay.
The old registry, I don't have a problem with that either, because you have a Lowell Connector, Route 3, 495. I do have a problem with some of the proposals that were on the paper, on the proposing for the city. Westford and Stedman Street, absolutely ludicrous. Drum Hill, there's more traffic on Drum Hill than you can imagine. There's 27,000 cars a day that traverse on Westford Street, Wood, Wood Street, in that location. The traffic is backed up from Drum Hill to the Rock Bridge. Worse than that, I went to a meeting Wednesday night, thinking I was going to a meeting for the Drum Hill site, and it wasn't that at all. They're proposing a marijuana retail store at 1774 Middlesex Street. Does anyone know where that is?
Well, I know where it is, I go buy it every day.
It's 50 yards from the base of the Rock Bridge. 50 yards, not five miles, 50 yards. And they only have 12 dedicated parking spots, 12 dedicated. And worse than that, they're proposing in another location at 5 Weber Street, which is 5/10 of a mile inbound by Dunkin' Donuts. Those, all those neighborhoods, 1774 Middlesex Street, 5 Weber Street, is highly, highly condensed, it's a highly residential area. There's no parking, no parking. Now, if I may, if I ask Mr. Slagel a question, Mr. Slagel, can you give me, in the audience here, another answer to how many locations are proposed, and where they're proposed in the city?
Sure, through you, Mr. Chairman. So what I'd actually like to do is, in the past, we have, we have stated that we were, because this was a deliberative process, we were withholding the specific locations, we weren't releasing the specific locations, but many of these locations have had public outreach meetings, and so I feel comfortable that that information is in the public. So not just the, I want to share the specific locations with folks.
Sure.
Okay? So there is the entity that is proposing at 450 Chelmsford Street, which is the registry building.
That's the Highlands.
Okay. There is the entity that is proposing at 5 Weber Street.
That's the Highlands.
That is the, the entity that's having the community outreach meeting tonight. There's an entity proposing at 671 to 683 Roger Street, in Belvedere. There is an entity at 1201 Westford Street, which is in Drum Hill.
The Highlands.
That's the, that's, that...
What's the number again?
1201 Westford Street. There's an entity proposing at 1148 Bridge Street, in Chelmsford, I mean, I'm sorry, in Centerville. And then there are, there is another entity that is proposing, that hasn't had a community outreach meeting yet, so I wouldn't share its specific location, but there's another entity on Middlesex Street, and then there's another entity in Drum Hill.
So how many locations in the Highlands, Mr. Slagel?
I think we talked, I think we talked about it, there's...
Five? And what, and Westford Street and Stedman Street were six.
But again, and I want to make it clear, those are six proposals, they will, there will not be six host community agreements in the Highlands. There could be 100 proposals in the Highlands, it's not going to change the number of host community agreements the manager is willing to sign there. So I think that's the, the, the number of proposals is only reflective of the fact that the Highlands has a lot of access to districts that are appropriate.
I'm not finished. Thank you for allowing me to speak, I know Nancy Judge would like to say something as well. The picture that I just painted, for everyone, the city, this is a large city, and we all know there has to be five locations in the city, but not in all one neighborhood. And I'll tell you something, the people in the Highlands are extremely, extremely... And I'll tell you something, the people in the Highlands are extremely, extremely upset. And they're not going to just sit back and do nothing because they're going to, there's an army of people at the BFW tonight at 6:00 to meet about 5 Weber Street. We're all going to join forces. And when these public hearings come into this building, we will, we will be here. Believe me. So the last time I brought this to your attention, Mr. Chairman, I think I said, don't wake, wake a sleeping dog?
Yep.
Well, the sleeping dog is awake. And, you know, I all know, we have to have them in the city, but not all in one neighborhood. Traffic, traffic, traffic. On my way down here tonight, Middlesex Street, from the Virgo Rapids Bridge to the, it was a parking lot, an absolute parking lot. The two people that were looking to get approval for 1774 Middlesex Street, one lives in Summerville and the other fellow lives in Watertown. They're not going to make a fortune on my back or my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caul. Look, I just want to, we can, we can have more focus. I completely concur. Those particular traffic corridors are incredibly congested and it's not just during my shower. Only because I'm in that area every day, every day. And additional, I know it's a commercial corridor, but adding additional traffic to that area, people are just, they're out of their minds with sitting in traffic. I know. And it doesn't, it almost doesn't matter what day of the week or what time it is, it's just very, very congested. So I concur. Should not be, should not, we should not have an overburden of outlets there. Sir?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chairman and members of this committee. My name is David Baroa, for the record. And I live here in 164 Pine Street, Highland 2, in this area. But my concern is basically, not necessarily for the traffic or for, if those stores or company that want to produce marijuana is in one location. In fact, my concern is about the life. And I am so sad and for me, and I regret myself, that it's a little bit late in some way. I don't know if you, if you're thinking that way too. But I think as another city, the city making the decision that do not have those stores and those type of business in the city. I went to, to public meeting for those company and some of them are not from here. They only came here to make business. I understand. But I think that we need to realize the big issue that we are creating in the future. I was in Boston taking classes for, to be a advice, for addicted advice, so person to give you some advice, a person that is in addition, around four years ago. And when we get information, the, this will be, I mean, open in this state, we realize that we are getting into a big problem. I understand the new society is thinking that everything that is new is good. Thinking about it, right now, many states are opposing to vaping. So why, oh, at the beginning, yes, it's only flavor liquid and try to respond of the needs of those who are addicted to nicotine? Okay. But at the end, and right now, they are creating a big trouble, killing person, and we need to think about life. Finally, sir, I listen, many mother and parent concerning to this situation. And what I'm asking to you and to this committee is to take consideration, not only in the way of this will be organized or will be applied in this zone or in this area or based on the traffic, think about the big problem that this will cause in the city. Think about that, okay? And at the end, I have a question. So based on what the gentleman said before, the, the public meeting are a requirement based on the established or some, the, the state required to have the, the public meeting. So what about the city? Is another city concerned about that if the public here disagree or have some concern about it? So I think the city have to be aware of that and to make that as a requirement too. So thank you for letting me to express myself.
You're welcome.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome. Anytime, please come down. Ms. Judge is going to another community meeting.
Unfortunately, we have a meeting at 6:00 that we have to go through, so I know.
That's fine. Mr. Belleguard and then Mr. Judge and then Mr. Castaneda after that.
Okay. Thank you for the chair. I wasn't really planning on speaking tonight. Actually, I've been away, so I was trying to get up to speed on exactly what this was and what was in front of us tonight. But being here now and getting an understanding of how the process works, I just don't understand the logistics of it because first and foremost, I live at 25 Joffrey Street in Lowell and it's in the heart of these five districts. And when I stand outside my street and I look to the right of me, I got UMass Lowell, I got the dormitories of UMass Lowell. When I look at the left side, I look up the street, I got the charter streets, the charter schools. They're in the process of going to the phase two of the charter schools because I got kids in the public school system. I know there's a public, public schools has a network of busing that goes down Middlesex Street every day. I believe ironically, there's actually a bus stop, I believe, right in front of 5 Weber Street. I know inbound, outbound is probably at least four or five bus stops that run along that corridor, right in that direct vicinity. As Council Caulfield, as he was painting that picture, it is a nightmare. It took me 35 minutes to get here tonight in a, in a time that really should have only taken us 15 minutes. I'm assuming that's exactly why Nancy Judge was actually a few minutes late because it was just horrendous getting over here, not unusual. I was also, as you, as indicated earlier, I was your Parks Commissioner for almost 35 years. I know that area is home of Lowell U Soccer Association. There's almost 2,000 children that play soccer up in that general location, a stone's throw from that where this institution will be. It's also home of high school, Highlands baseball and Lowell Catholic softball. It makes absolutely no sense to me, from a logistic point of view. And also from a policy, a practice point of view, I received this letter on Saturday and they treated, and this organization treated it like a variance where only 300 feet from the targeted area got notified. I just happened to be mowing the lawn when they came over with this, with this registered letter. The other five folks in my neighborhood got the actual sticker placed on their door because they weren't home, which means on Saturday they got the sticker, on Monday was a holiday, on Tuesday they called the post office, not knowing what they were going to get. They probably couldn't, didn't get around to maybe Wednesday actually going down to see what they got, which was for a Thursday night meeting, which is tonight at 6:00. I'm being told it was, it may be even an unauthorized meeting. They're down there now because they actually knocked on a dozen doors saying, we really should go down and listen to what they have to say because I have no idea what this is. Ironically, because I used to work for the city, they feel as though when there's a question or an issue, they come to me and want to know what it is. And as I said, I made reference to the fact of what this is. And I really believe that as we move forward on this, and I don't know what to expect because I'm not sure what's, it's at VFW on Plain Street at 6:00. I'm assuming we're going to have some people turn out to deal with Northeast alternative to find out exactly, you know, what it is that they're going to tell us. But it is 5 Weber Street. I encourage those people out there that are listening to me tonight, this is a phase, a step that, that's going to involve a few different multi-phases. And I didn't know there was five locations, I knew there's five locations in terms of, in the city of Lowell, there are going to be five licenses. I had no idea that we were going to be special and get the five, and have an opportunity to possibly get five licenses in the Highlands. It is just unbelievable. I cannot begin to understand on how that can be possible. But anyway, thank you for your time and thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Belleguard. Nice to see you. Ms. Judge?
Good evening. I'm Nancy Judge. I reside at 28 Fosh Street, which is right off of Weber Street. And even though I chair the Highlands Neighborhood Association, I'm really here as a resident of the area. And I know why most of these organizations or shops wish to come into the Highlands because we have easy access. I realize that.
Well, I have to tell you, if they were out there anywhere between 2 and 8 o'clock, they may change their mind, but...
Well, that is, that is true, Rodney, and I know that you travel it every day.
Or 7 o'clock.
Yes, right.
It's mind boggling.
Right. I pick up my great grandson at the charter school every day at 10 minutes to 4:00. Do you want to know what that's like? You know what it's like, Rodney, because you've been there.
Every day.
And yes, I was late because it took me forever to get here. I forgot that UMass Lowell and the kids were there. It was like, I just was all over the place. But I did finally get here and we do have a meeting at 6:00. But I do want to stress that we do not need six sites proposed in the Highlands. We have the one Industrial Ave, which seems to run very smoothly. We've had no issues with it. The gentleman that's in charge over there, Bob Mayerson, is always in contact with me. So meet, as a, I have a meeting with him on Monday and he's also attending our meeting on Monday evening. The Old Registry isn't a bad site. Easy access on, plenty of parking. I don't really think that if it went in the Highlands, anyone, well, there might be a few objections, but for the most part. Drum Hill is a little bit iffy. The traffic there can be brutal, especially at certain times. We don't need two MOA on Middlesex Street at all.
So in reality, Ms., excuse me, just in reality, there are five, but there's only four to award moving forward. You've already given one to the one at Industrial Ave.
Correct. There's only four, there will only be five in the city total.
Five, yes, five in the city and...
Industrial Ave is, is one.
Right. And we would prefer not to have the majority of them, Mr. Schlegel, in the Highlands. I know, I know.
And I...
And I know it's not up to you, Eric, and I know it's not up to the, this subcommittee and I know there's a panel out there that it's up to. But as city councilors, I hope that you will advise that panel to spread the wealth, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I do want to make it again, very clear, that the city manager is in full agreement with folks on this issue.
That's good. We're, we're probably going to see you up there, so we'd like to hear from the public. We're going to recess this meeting, reconvene in a lot of time. I think it's important to...
We'll keep you informed.
We'll probably see you up at Plain Street.
We'll be up there.
Thank you.
Okay.
If I could just say something really quick, I, I do want to make it clear, the entity that we were concerned about the notice provisions being incorrect was the one that had it last week, not the one that was happening, happening tonight. So I don't have it, we did, the city did get notice of the one that was happening tonight. And there will be a city representative at the meeting.
Oh, good.
Good evening, sir. Thank you. My name is Juan Castaneda, from 744 Amerimast Street in Lowell, Mass. I just, my concern is about the whole issue about the stores. We hear discussing, talking, sorry, talking about where the stores will be, but the community, I know for a fact is everybody's so concerned about these stores. The, the community of Lowell, we figured it out too late because we don't know how to stop this. Because the city of Lowell don't want the stores in the city, the people. If we go to the community, they don't want to. Maybe we come late, but we trust the city. We trust the city council officers to stop this because we can know, because they said, this is like a, they, they come with this idea to, to stop the opious problem we have. That's what they told me. And I said, how we can restore somebody who is already, and who has a drug addiction problem and then we're going to create another kind of drug addiction?
Let me just make it clear because I didn't support this either. The city has had no say in this, you probably know. This was put on the ballot, the statewide ballot. It was supported and those communities that supported it by more than 51% were mandated, were mandated to have a minimum of five. And the city council voted back in 2018 that we're not going to have any more than five.
Okay.
So I just want to say, when we tried to stop it, there was no way for us to stop it. What we did try to do is create, we did create zones where we felt they would have the least impact on the neighborhoods and, and that's where we're at. So we zoned, we don't support it, we have to have five and we're trying to do the best that we can to put it in areas.
I know, but I'm sorry, but the other cities, the, the state demanded the other cities to do it. But unfortunately, the city of Lowell don't get in front in time. That, that's what it is. And we, I think so, we can do something about it. Because if the community...
We could do something about what?
To stop this. There's no way we can stop the stores.
There's no way that we can stop this, Ms. Castaneda.
And I just want to clarify really quick. So the, the state referendum happened in, on the, the national election in 2016, so it was a very high turnout in Lowell and the majority of voters in Lowell did vote for this. The majority of people who voted in that election voted to make this legal, which is why Lowell, which is, which is why we would have had a very hard uphill climb to somehow ban it. And that ship has sailed. So that, right now, we're, we're, we're at the...
I know, but I don't know, I don't know if we can have a sound of control about this because I work with the community, directly with them, and I noticed these, the adults is buying the marijuana and sell it to the 13, 14-year-old boys and girls. This is going to, is affecting the city big time. And this will be, because the, the problems we have with the drug addiction now, do you, what do you think about who will be the next customers of those stores or grandkids? So we got to do something about it. I don't know how, how we can come with some idea or do something about it because it going to affect the generations who comes.
We agree with you. I mean, I agree with you.
That's my point, my issue.
The state made it a requirement and there's, it's unfortunate. We're just going to have to make sure that it's not being illegally sold and that it's being properly run. We agree with you. It's happening across the, across the state. Many people don't agree. I didn't vote for it. I think your point is well taken, though.
Thank you, Mr. Alio. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else want to speak on this before, before we move? Mr. Schlegel, anything else?
I just wanted to make one other very quick point in response to that, which is, the legislation that legalized it, not only legalized retail sale, it legalized folks to grow it themselves. So one of the reasons that we talked about it, doing it in, in, in a regulated way that we controlled, is because folks that haven't done that in other, in other states, the, the home grow got out of control and that was way harder to, for the, to be regulated than if we have it in dispensaries. And that's just...
The only motion I would like to make is that we ask you, Mr. Schlegel and the administration, to just consider or come back with a report or, I'm trying to get at the point where we're not going to accept any more applications or, at least, you know, maybe at the next meeting, if you can have a discussion on how, I mean, you made the point with, I mean, maybe the council needs to take a vote that until these are all vetted, then we're not going to accept any applications. Perhaps the motion is to make sure that we... Perhaps the motion is to make sure that we can do that by virtue of state law or not.
So I'm certain, A, that we could, and B, I can't 100% speak for the manager. But I'm, I will tell, I will relay that to her, and I have all confidence that she will instruct us to tell folks we're not accepting applications.
So this will be my motion, Mr. Clark, that the city administration look into the possibility of putting a moratorium or restriction on the number of new applications submitted.
I'll second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed, that motion carries. I think that gives latitude to have a conversation with the manager, saying, "Should we do this? Should we not do this? What is the best way to handle it?" Is perhaps the intent behind it. Makes sense? Okay. No further business. Motion to adjourn by Councilor Conway, second by Council, by myself. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and opposed, that motion carries. This meeting stands adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Schlegel. Thank you, everyone from the public for attending. We appreciate it. We'll have, we'll have more meetings on this.